Okay. Welcome back, everyone. Okay, break's over. Come on, let's go to work. Got a lot to do. Appreciate all of you coming. Those of you who are sitting in the back row, no cookies. Everybody in the front row gets two cookies. Okay. If you'd all please rise. Our invocation speaker was not able to be with us tonight, so I'll do my best to fill in. Dear Lord, thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed on our valley. Guide us to share those blessings with everyone in our valley and inspire all of us to lead in our own way for the good of our valley. Amen. Do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, if you could give the report from closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There was the item, the two items on the agenda, and there was the added item, and there was no reportable action, and the public employee performance will be continued to another night.
Thank you. Presentations. Now we're gonna have some fun. Larry, are you the recipient of National Public Works Week? Proclamation for National Public Works Week, whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public, of the public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, electric, street, highways, public buildings, solid waste collections, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and efficiency of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the effort and skill of the public works personnel, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the public works department is materially influenced by people's understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to 26th as National Public Works Week in the City of Lompoke, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to the health, safety, and comfort and quality of life. And our head public worker, Larry Bean.
Thank you. I accept this proclamation in the name of all city employees that work in public works endeavors, and we have many. Our utilities department and public works department all do public works, even though they're separated. And I'll run through the list again that weren't on, some weren't on the proclamation to remind you. We have a full staff engineering department that takes care of capital improvement projects, traffic engineering, oversees development in the city. We have a street maintenance division. We have an urban forestry division, takes care of our trees, street trees, parks maintenance, fleet maintenance and management, facility maintenance and management. We operate a full-service transit system, an airport, as you just had a discussion. And then over in the utility side, we have water distribution and water wells, our own system. We have wastewater collection and treatment. We have a complete electric division that serves electricity in the City of Lompoke. We have a solid waste division. We operate our own landfill, and we have our own Wi-Fi system. Our employees are to be commended, and I thank you for this honor and proclamation. I would like to show you this year's national poster. It represents the 75th anniversary of the Golden Gate Bridge. I think it's one of the nicest posters they've had thus far. It reads, "Public Works Creating a Lasting Impression." And we will have this poster and displays from all the other divisions set up next week in our lobby. Again, I thank you.
Bob Wetzel, come on down. Good evening, sir. A proclamation on behalf of Water Awareness Month. Who here likes to drink water? Does anyone want to drink sand? Okay, you're set. Your job is secure. It was pointed out to me when I came on this job that the mayor had three primary responsibilities. The water had to come in, the wastewater had to go out, and the lights had to come on, or life was bad. So I appreciate you taking care of that for us. Whereas, water is our nation's most precious natural resource and a basic essential need of every living creature, and whereas the citizens of Lompoke own, own, and operate an independent water system that includes wells, reservoirs, 135 miles of pipeline, state-of-the-art water treatment plant since 1989, and whereas the citizens of Lompoke have continued to maintain their per capita water consumption at or below 1989 consumption levels, and have demonstrated their knowledge of the importance of conserving our limited water resources, and whereas to ensure an ample supply of good quality water for our community, we must continue to work together to efficiently conserve and protect the quality and quantity of our local resource. And whereas during the month of May, the City of Lompoke joins with other cities and water districts throughout the nation to spread a water conservation message, and whereas throughout the year, the City of Lompoke sponsors a wide variety of water conservation programs such as the public school education program, water audits, dishwasher, clothes dryer, and toilet retrofit rebate programs, and whereas the city sponsored an art contest in April of 2012 for kindergarten through sixth grade with a theme of Leap for Water, which we'll be presenting next week. I hope you come. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim May as Water Awareness Month and urge all citizens to join with me in support of our, of the efforts of the utility department of the City of Lompoke to educate Lompoke citizens in water awareness. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Bob Wetzel. I'm the maintenance supervisor at the water treatment plant, and I'm very happy to accept this on behalf of the men and women that work 24/7 to provide safe and clean drinking water for the citizens. Thank you.
Okay, I take, I took this one away from the mayor tonight. I don't know, all of you know that this past year, Lompoke High School won a state championship in football, but not many of you, or maybe not many of you realize that recently, the School of Lompoke High School also won a state championship and, for their automotive class, ROP class. And I'd like to call up two of the students, Andrew Ramirez and Clayton Preston, come up here. Is there anyone else from the high school here?
No, he had a, he had a teacher.
Principal here, maybe? No? Okay. Okay. It's a proclamation commending two Lompoke High School automotive students for winning first place in the 2012 Ford AAA Student Auto Skills in California statewide competition. Whereas Clayton Peterson and Andrew Ramirez, a team of stu, of two exceptional students from Lompoke High School Automotive Class, and instructor Michael Johnson entered the 2012 Ford AAA Student Auto Skills Competition in California, and are the two, and are the two highly recommended and congratulated for being selected as the first-place winners of the competition. And whereas, out of 40 different high schools participating in the event, Lompoke High School Automotive Class, team of Clayton Peterson and Andrew Ramirez, led the way by demonstrating excellence in their devoted skills and knowledge of winning the competition, and each receiving five college scholarships worth $55,500 each. Congratulations. Clayton Peterson and Andrew Ramirez were the two standout participants that deserve the distinctive recognition for their superior skills, knowledge, and abilities by completing the in hand, and hands-on competition in 59 minutes, 49 seconds of finding and perfectly repairing 10 out of 10 problems planted by the judges in a disabled 2012 Ford Fusion. Whereas, statewide champion, Lompoke High School Automotive Team of Clayton Peterson and Andrew Ramirez will now advance to the Ford AAA Student Auto Skills National Finals in Dearborn, Michigan next month, where the $12 million in scholarships and prizes will be distributed. Now therefore, our mayor, John Lynn, of the City of Lompoke, California, do hereby congratulate Clayton Peterson and Andrew Ramirez of, from Lompoke High School's Automotive ROP Class for their demonstration of superior automotive repair knowledge, and their skill of, and their, and their instructor, Michael Johnson, for his expertise and guidance in their, in their very well-deserved accomplishments of winning the Ford AAA Stadium statewide competition. Congratulations. Any guys want to say something?
I'd just like to thank my instructor, Mr. Johnson, couldn't be with us because he has to teach up at Hancock, but I'd like to thank him a lot for all this stuff he's taught us, and, um, thank you.
Why don't you tell them how the competition took place?
Well, the competition took place where there was 25 schools in the Southern California and 25 schools in the North had to take a test, and out of those 10 top scores in the North, 10 top scores in the South got into state competition. And so then we went down to the competition in Pomona, and then whoever fixed the car the fastest and had the most, the best car, like the most perfect car, won, and we had the only perfect car in the whole entire state. So, that's how it was.
Okay. It is important to recognize then that it was the only perfect repair, perfectly repaired car in the entire state of California, so, there you go.
I'd like to go ahead and mention, you guys aren't the first team in recent years that's won this competition from Lompoke, are you? There was another, you aren't the first team in the last couple of years either, are you? There was another team a few years ago, huh? Speaks very highly of your automotive shop.
And I recall when I was in high school, and it was Chrysler Plymouth that sponsored it, my partner and I only got six out of 10, so. Yeah. Heck, I don't think that Chrysler still runs. Okay. Uh, let's see. Oh, I have an announcement that I, if I don't do it, I'll forget, from the, from the Recreation Department. We're in the midst of our challenge to, to match the grant provided by Immeris, which we all would really know as, as Sellite or John's Manville, and they will match $1 for dollar in donations from this year's 4th of July celebration up to $10,000. So, if you want to see your money double, the Recreation Department would love to talk to you, and Joanne, after the meeting, you can talk to me. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll get both of these in a minute, 'cause I've got two. And then lastly, with regard to the water proclamation, there, by last count, there are 6,100 toilets in Lompoke that have not been, yet been replaced with a new water-efficient toilet. The city pays about 70% of it, so if you have one of those old toilets, please contact the utility conservation department, and they will help you get that taken care of. We have two changes in the agenda tonight. One is item number eight. There, there's documentation for that that we have not yet received, and that item will be taken off to come back to us in the near future. And with regard to item number 11, we had a meeting with the Environmental Education Group with the Economic Development Committee two weeks ago, and after that, Teresa went on vacation, and I went on brain dead, and neither one of us called them to come tonight, so they're not here, so we'll be continuing that until the 29th. So the date's certain for that is the 29th. And those are the only changes that we have. City, oh, I'm sorry, I have one more presentation, and that is a presentation from Urban Futures to provide an update on the progress of compiling the comprehensive report on all the city loans granted to the Lompoke Housing Community Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator, wanted to take a brief moment to introduce the city's consultant, Urban Futures Incorporated. The city entered into a contract with Urban Futures in March and has been working with their team to provide an audit on the LHCDC affordable housing files, loan files. More than 40 files, over 8,000 pages of documentation, were scanned and sent to them for review and analysis. Urban Futures was selected as our consultant because of their strong experience in affordable housing. They were formed in 1972 and have been providing compliance administration since 1979. They provide affordable housing and occupancy monitoring services and have been doing so for more than 32 years. They represent large and small housing authorities, cities, former redevelopment agencies, counties, property management companies, developers, and owners. Other Urban Futures clients include the cities of Pasadena, Los Angeles, Anaheim, and the county of Orange. Urban Futures Affordable Housing Staff is certified in compliance administration and knowledgeable of the laws and regulations relating to affordable rental and ownership housing. Their expertise extends to, but is not limited to, review of compliance reports, conducting income, asset, and rent analysis, onsite file inspections and training. They also specialize in projects with multiple funding sources, including single-family and multifamily tax-exempt bond projects, home funds, CDBG funds, housing choice vouchers, tax credits, project base section eight projects, public housing, and post-purchase monitoring. So with us today to give a current status update on this project is Steve Duquette, Managing Principal of Urban Futures. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much. It's rare that I get an introduction quite as lavish as that, so I do appreciate that. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, certainly a pleasure to be with you this evening. We're very pleased to be of aid to the city with respect to this assignment, and we understand even more so now, 'cause we, we have most of those 8,000 pages, I might add. They came to us electronically but in lump, and we have been sorting through them and segregating, segregating them by type, for example. Covenants, promissory notes, deed to trust, things of that sort, that are in the pertinent project file, and we're organizing them in a way so that we can respond to what's required pursuant to the audit that falls into two primary categories, dealing with affordability compliance matters, because all, all projects that have affordable housing money, whether it's HUD redevelopment, property, excuse me, tax exempt financing, or tax credits, have to have some production of affordable housing that has to be monitored. So that's part of what we're doing, and as Teresa mentioned, we've been doing this for several decades now. Actually, we're the, we're the, we have the largest account of affordable housing monitoring for projects in California, so we're, we're very, very active in that regard. The second half of the analysis relates to financial compliance, because there were a series of loans, in some cases, on some of your projects, there were as many as three loans that were layered, layered on each other, and so the analysis will look at the conformance with those requirements. There were also indications with respect to a nonprofit that was operating here, that there, there may be some change in property ownership, and what we will examine and report back to you as what the status of whatever the liens might have been with respect to the agency, the city. We initially began this process under the belief we could turn this around in a few weeks, and we know that you are very eager to have the results that will come forth soon. We too are also eager. The magnitude of the review of the documents was much greater than, both staff and the folks over at Urban Futures that are going through this imagined, so we needed to be very precise and detailed in that analysis, because ultimately, the assurance that we have all the information relative to the two parts of our analysis is absolutely essential to deliver a quality product to you, and we are well past the midway point in that process. Actually, we have data on every single site that we've been asked to look at. There are 18 that we're reviewing. We provided staff a matrix with respect to the individual status by site and loan number relative to the types of documents that we need. In many cases, I think almost every case, we have the documentation. Most of that's been verified. Some of it is still pending verification. We will complete that over the next few weeks, and we will deliver to you through the staff first, a, what we call, screen check draft of our report. About third week or so, June is what we project at this particular point in time. I will, as, as an asterisk to that, it is possible that it could come sooner. We'd like to give it to you sooner, actually, but we want to make sure that we have that dialed in. If it happens about that time, allowing for about a week review and comment turnaround with respect to any comments staff may have, then we will provide a, we would call it a final, technically, it's a final draft until it's presented to you, either the last week of June, the first week of July, and then it'll be scheduled for a council meeting, and I'll be back with one of my colleagues to make a presentation to you with respect to those results. We hope in a July meeting, worst-case scenario, as we see now, your first meeting in August. I understand that's later than what you have liked, and frankly, I would, the ideal situation is I would be before you, be before you this evening, giving you this report, but given the magnitude of the documentation required to review and our quality insurance that we gave when we entered into this contract with the city, we need to make sure we go through every possible process to evaluate the documentation, review the properties, so on and so forth, to be able to deliver the quality document that you need, and although just a little bit longer, as I assured staff a little bit earlier before this meeting, when we deliver the product, it will be extraordinarily useful to you. You will be able to have, in effect, a report on a standstill basis as to where those projects are, what you need to do, and as it relates to either aspects of our report. And as time goes on, I'm certain that whatever the issues were won't be revisited, and when you look back on the amount of time it took to do this work, it will seem like a short period. So that's the essence of what we've reported to staff in much more detail. We've provided them schedules as it relates to these matters. I'm sure that they can, if it's of interest, that's something you could look at as well. If there are any questions about the nature of our review, or anything I've shared with you this evening, I'd be very pleased to answer those questions.
Councilmember Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree that the time the report is taking is less important than the accuracy and the completeness, so I, I commend you in concentrating on those two items as opposed to the time. That's really secondary. You mentioned that, at this point, you have all the documents that you need to complete your report, though?
Well, we have documentation for every one of the 18 properties we're looking at. We've indicated to staff where we are in that review. In some cases, we have a request for data that's still pending with staff. This has not been an easy thing for your staff, I might add, and I do want to compliment them for their stick-to-it-iveness and researching and obtaining from the files. Sometimes, when it comes to matters like this, and I guess it's easy to blame folks who used to be here, and I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. Our knowledge of this particular city is that there was proper oversight in place, and people did what they thought they needed to do at the time. Sometimes, when there are adjustments financially, there are movements of staff, sometimes we would disconnect, not one with any malice involved, but just those kinds of things happen. So there's sometimes there is a, to get some of the documentation on anything, and in particular this case, is a little bit more difficult than one would imagine. I will say your staff are all over this. We anticipate actually having all of that material in place pursuant to our conversations by the end of next week. It will have everything in place, and we're simply reviewing it for, for verification purposes to make sure it is appropriate to our, our duties, and that won't take but a few more days, and we're ready to rock and roll with the balance of the work.
Okay. As you are, as you are aware, simultaneously with your investigation report, the county of Santa Barbara is doing a forensic, or having a forensic audit done. I'm understanding that they're having trouble obtaining information. What information are they having trouble in obtaining that you're not having trouble obtaining?
Well, we're, we're not in the loop with the county. Your staff may have an answer with respect to that matter. It may very well be the data that, that we have requested might be the same data, to some degree, the county wants, but I, you know, I'm only guessing. So your staff would need to answer that question.
Well, I'm hoping that if we have information that they're struggling to get, that we'd share that information with the county as well.
Well, on a personal, you have great staff, so I'm sure they would cooperate with the county in every possible way.
I think the city attorney has that information.
Perhaps I could address the question, Councilmember Lingel. The, the information the county is seeking is information from LHCDC themselves. The information that we're talking about tonight is the city's files and the city's information.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned that, you said that you have documentation for every property. I have, I have a problem with that. I don't think is that we just need documentation. I think we need all the documentation for every property if we want this report to be comprehensive.
That's correct.
So, so how are you going to make sure that you obtain all the documentation from our city staff?
Yes. What we have done is we've identified to your staff the missing pieces of data by property. We have some information about every piece of property, and we have all the information about some pieces of property. And in some cases, there's some missing documents that we've asked them to get for us, and they're in the property, the process of doing that. We anticipate a response, it could be any day, but we were hoping to have it by the end of next week, all the outstanding matters. We've been very clear with staff regarding what we need, and so it should be, hopefully those documents can be found. If that's not the case, then there's other ways to go about getting the data. We included in our contract a, a work item that, to the extent we needed to actually obtain some documents, assuming they were recorded, we could certainly do that, but we'd rather have staff do that, and there's ways for they, them to do that. We think that could probably be faster than, than any effort we might put into it, but we're willing to help if, if needed.
So now, you're, you're doing this chronologically? I mean, if you see gaps in documentation, is because there is information missing as far as loans being given out in dates? I mean, I'm just trying to get an understanding. How do you know that you have all the information?
Well, it starts with the data we received. Okay? And we don't know why the data was filed the way it was, it was. And it was, this was done so in the past by whoever was responsible for the projects. We don't know who that is, and we're not saying that all the data were not in place, but when the information was scanned, it was scanned, scanned in lump, and then loaded up on your FTP site. So we're, we're talking about files probably that thick, coming on your FTP site as one document. So what we have to do is we have to look at them and then break them apart in individual pieces and make sure they are related to the property for which we believe the file was intended to represent. In some cases, we found documents that related to a different property. By the way, that's not necessarily a problem. It just, 'cause we had to look at each one anyway to be able to get to that point, so that's- we had to look at each one anyway to be able to get to that point. So that's, it's that level of review that we're giving, the, the documentation we have received, to have an assurance that we have everything we need. And in some cases, we have noticed some, some missing documents. I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the types of documents we're looking for. And to, when that was found, we communicated with your staff regarding what we needed and specifically which piece of property it related to. And, and as I mentioned, other staff has been very helpful and responsive. And I imagine they're doing some additional documentation, searching, to be able to obtain whatever it is we need to complete our work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There, frankly, everyone's been very helpful. But the task at hand for us was different than what we were hoping it to be when we started. We're not afraid of doing it this way. We've helped other jurisdictions exactly the same way. Where we get huge files, guys go figure it out. Well, we do that. We do that for a living. We didn't anticipate that in this particular case. That's one of, and the major reason I'm standing here explaining a status report to you, rather than delivering you the final product. I would rather have done that tonight, but that's not possible, given the, the documents that we have with the, but it will be very soon.
My other question is, can you venture to tell us approximately what is the total amount of money that you are reviewing in loans?
I, I can't give you that number this evening.
You have no idea? Okay. Thank you.
Well, we have documents to show it, but I just don't recall that.
Thank you. We're, we'll be eagerly awaiting for the report. And I would like to use this opportunity to address something with the council. As Councilmember Lingle mentioned, the county is conducting a forensic audit. And I would like to make a motion. And this motion comes about, I guess it was about a week ago. I went to the Fourth District Supervisor Forum, Candidate Forum, and Supervisor Gray mentioned and said that she supported the forensic audit that is going on in the county regarding LHCDC. As we know, the city is not participating in this forensic audit. The forensic audit that is being done by the county is only relating to county monies, not to city monies. So I would like to propose and look for support in the council to actually put an agenda item in the future, in the near future, that will discuss the potential possibility of having the city of Lompoc either join forces with the county, that's one option, to expand the forensic audit to city funds. Another option would be that the city of Lompoc pursues a forensic audit, and I would like an agenda item that would discuss what would be those costs. And perhaps the third option is to do nothing. But the reason why I'm bringing this up here right now, that I think this council needs to address it as an agenda item, is that there is enough concern from the public regarding, what is the extent from the part of the city regarding this forensic audit. So I would like council members to look at the pros and cons and discuss them in an agenda item. So to do that, I'm looking for a second and a third.
Councilmember Martner, I will definitely second your motion. This had been brought up once before, and I thought that we had agreed that it was something we wanted to do jointly. So I will definitely second your motion to move forward.
Right. And actually, as part of the motion and how the agenda item is that I would like to get an update, and I think the council needs to get an update on what are, if any, conversations that are going on with the county regarding joining forces in the, in the forensic audit. Now, that is one of the options, but I think the agenda item has to be expanded to look at all options and discuss the monetary aspects of it and everything else.
Seems reasonable to me. Are you anticipating starting down this road prior to receiving the information from these folks? Something we would do concurrently, or?
Well, I think it should be done jointly as, if at all possible. So if we're talking about having this report coming back to the council in the beginning of July, I would like to have the agenda item regarding the forensic audit discussion around the same time period, hopefully in the same meeting, if, if, if possible at all. But yes, I think it would be very, very much of value to get this information so there would be more facts to base our decisions when the questions.
How about if we took a, and I don't mind having an agenda item, but to kind of move a little sooner in between, how about if we ask the city administrator or the city attorney, or the two of them together, however they work it out, to speak with the county and see how they're doing, and they could come back with, to us at our next meeting with a progress report on the county. And then we can get a motion together to decide exactly how we want to go forward. And I, I don't have any problem with the fact that we're going to go forward. I'd just, I'd like a little more information from the county to see what they're doing.
Well, I think that would be part of the agenda item. Whenever the agenda gets set, certainly the information that the city attorney or the city administrator owes us already should be there as part of the report. So I, I just assume to have it as an agenda item. For one, we need public input. It needs to be properly posted, and I think it deserves the public attention.
No, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that in the interim, to get something a little quicker, we could get a staff report back that would help us.
That is absolutely fine. But I still want to make sure that the agenda item will be put in place in July.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hidden by the water pitcher. Let me, let me make sure. Yes, consensus? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I have, I have five. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Councilmember Lingle, I, I wanted to just say that I thought I had, I believed the same, which is that we had already given that direction to staff, and we're just waiting for that to return. So if this is just going to expedite the process, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for our, our guests here this evening? Seeing none? Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much for letting me share information with you. Have a good evening.
We hope you're staying with us this evening and having breakfast here in the morning, too.
Well, the next time I come, I will. I, I have an urgent matter back home tomorrow morning, so I'm unable to do it. But next time.
We'll get you here yet.
Thank you.
And the city administrator's report.
Honorable mayor, city council members, audience and viewers, the President of the United States proclaims today as Peace Officers Memorial Day and directed that the American flag be flown at half-staff in honor of all law enforcement officers and their families who served tirelessly and devote their lives to forging a stronger, safer America. On this Peace Officers Memorial Day, we thank Chief Dabney and our local Lompoc law enforcement officers for their diligence, serving the residents of our community, and keeping our neighborhoods safe. Thank you, Chief Dabney. Mr. Mayor and council, Teresa Galvin, our Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator, and Lompoc Recreation Staff are traveling to Clovis tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, to observe the Amgen Stop-Start Trial Races in consideration of Lompoc hosting an Amgen Trial Race in the future. And staff will provide counsel, follow-up on their observations. And also, I would take this time to commend Police Captain Larry Ralston and all the city captains and our fifty, and our forty-four city employees who participated in this year's Cancer Relay for Life Walk and raised a total of $194,000, donating to the American Cancer Society to fund a cure for cancer. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
And their goal was, for the event was $135,000. So they surpassed it. I was pleased to be out at the opening ceremony and spoke with the, the Galv, the Americans Cancer Society that coordinated it. And she advised me that the city of Santa Maria hasn't even gotten around to starting one yet. So you hear that over there in Santa Maria? We'll show you how. Come on down. We'll help you. Okay. Oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us on any subject. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. Thank you for putting this update on the LHCDC loans on tonight's agenda. I took a little bit of time to review the two meetings that this report was discussed at. And what I know at least four of you said was that you wanted a historical chronological report on each property, all the loans to each property. This was what Councilmember Starbuck called the pedigree of each loan. I put together a pedigree of what I could find in the public record for the loan for one property, I have seven copies. For the loan for one property on North T Street, 518 North T. When you get this to look at, you'll, you'll see why it's so important that a comprehensive historical record is produced. The North T Street property had nine loans approved by past city councils, starting in 2003. The last one that was approved was in 2009. And the last one, the last loan in October 2009, by the way, was approved when the property was already out of compliance. And that's confirmed by a report by city staff and that was given to you in 2011. Some of these loans were never dispersed because the project didn't progress, therefore, there were no loan documents executed. I've also indicated, you can see on the far right where I got this information, it all came from public records. What I do know is that this is the property, the city was notified on April 10th, that it must pay the U.S. Treasury back $140,000 for the original loan granted on April 1st, April Fool's Day, 2003. And HUD did notify the city it must use city funds. It can't use CDBG program income funds. So when you, you look at this list, you begin to understand how it's essential that the record be complete. The loans to this one property that I know of for sure that were actually dispersed are the original $140,000. There's another one, a Calhaffa loan, 103135, were dispersed. And then, I believe, on October 20th, 2009, of the $560,000 requested, only $280,000 were dispersed, with some of that, most of that going to repay the two earlier loans granted in 2006. What that means is the total out-of-pocket expenses for the city of Lompoc for a vacant lot on North T Street in a low-rent area of town is $580,000. That's the $140,000 the city must pay, the original $140,000 to acquire the property, and the $280,000 that I believe was approved in 2009. And I have to say, I can only believe it because when I requested confirmation in, I believe it was January 2011, I received a note from the city attorney saying that this was being discussed in closed session, therefore, the city couldn't answer me. So altogether, including the grant, it, it comes to $580,000 for a property I'm told is probably worth about $40,000. I, I'm running out of time. I would also like to know if the consultant is going to include grants. There are large, there were many grants that I found. This was, this grant was given for staffing costs, pre-development costs. It's a grant, doesn't have to be paid back. If the grants aren't added to the totals for the properties, you're actually getting an incomplete record. The city documents show, and I'm quoting, "capacity building grants, operating grants for construction manager." Would you, could you give me 30 more seconds?
Sure.
Thank you. "Operating assistance grants, technical assistance grants, and a grant for an administrative assistant position, a grant for a property manager, and a grant for, quote, 'staffing costs associated with management and operations of affordable housing units.'" So to get a complete record of each property, of all the various loans from nineteen different sources were awarded to LHCDC, nineteen different source of loans. To get a complete record, one would need to add the operating grants given for specific developments. I just wanted to remind you, to reiterate, that you all asked for this comprehensive chronology of each loan. Thank you. And Councilmember Starbuck, it was interesting that you brought up the auto shop award, because one of the last stories I wrote when I was covering City Hall and Education Department for the Lompoc Record was LHS had won its first very big state award. And it was a huge front-page story, huge photo, and it was one of the more fun stories that I got to write. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time?
Hi. My name is Yedidia DeVries, and I just wanted to announce that there are brownies in the lobby for whoever wanted.
That'll probably double our attendance next week. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Last chance? Come on down.
Good evening. My name's James Downey. I'm a Lompoc resident. And I'm, I'm here primarily to thank you, actually, for your efforts in moving this LHCDC issue forward. It's obvious you're aware of the concern in the city about this issue. And I've come late to this party myself. But I, since, since I first was exposed to it, I've been trying to follow as best I can. I realize how complex it is. I know how complex you know it is. And I'm very grateful as a citizen that you are moving forward with this. It's going to take, obviously, your leadership to get Lompoc really through this crisis. And so there are a lot of people I know looking to you to, to, to do that. And I get the sense just personally that, that you are doing that. And I, and I'm grateful for it. And I look forward to the reports that are coming. I think there's a, a lot more. I think there will be other things to be done. I, I have a million questions. I'm not going to ask them all about LHCDC tonight at all. But I, one specific question I wanted to ask you was about the, the online videos that are made are very useful. I've heard the mayor reference that he uses them from time to time. They're better than minutes from the past. I've been told that they expire after a year and they drop off or are archived. My question is, are they archived? They are archived, and they are available to the public by request?
Yes.
That's great. I would, I would suggest a possible improvement to the system would be to expand the time, the period of time that those videos are available online to, you know, maybe up to three years or something like that, just as a policy. Might save some administrative.
Let me answer the question, because it has to do with server space, because video's very large, and that's been the issue. But if, if there's one that you want to see, all you need to do is contact the staff, and they'll hook you up with it.
Right. Okay, that'd be great. I, I would imagine that the cost of storage these days has dropped like a rock. And I, I would think that that might be an easier thing to do. But also, I wanted to suggest that it might, it might be useful in the future to, to develop a system that enables the public to make those videos searchable in some simple, simple form, other than just, you know, date and topic. These days, a, a lot of videos can be tagged so that you can do a search and gather videos from different periods of time to enable research of a, a specific topic. It's just a, a thought that I had. One last question, I really don't know the answer to, is some of us are aware, maybe I expect that you are also aware that there has been a, a call made by some individuals in the community for a grand jury investigation of this, the LHCDC. the community for a grand jury investigation of this, the LHCDC. I just call it a debacle out of habit. And I'm just wondering if maybe council would be able to shed some light on whether or not that would be something the city would be able to discuss and would support in the future, perhaps after more information is gathered.
I think our goal is to receive the report from the consultant and then plot a-
Course from there.
Course of action from that, yes.
Right. Well, again, I'll finally just say then, again, thank you very much. I know there's anxiety amongst some in wanting things to happen really, really fast, and I know, I can, from my personal perspective, there's just so much information, I don't know how that's going to happen, but I'm glad to hear that, I'm very proud as a citizen of Lompoc that you, as individuals and members of the council, are taking this head-on, and I appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight thousand pages is quite a challenge. Is there anyone else at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications, and we'll come back to the council. You're right, I'm stealing yours. No, that's not it. Well, there we go. Hiding. Okay, moving right along now that I found my agenda. Coming to the consent calendar, this evening we have approval in minutes of May 1st. We have the approval of expenditures, payroll voucher for $1,214, a voucher register, electronic payments for $1,600,000, a voucher register for $848,000, and a voucher register for $875,000. I will be abstaining from check number 305380 to Smitty's Towing, $487.50 for number 305385 to Speedy Lock and, oop, wrong order. Okay. One check to Speedy Towing, or one check to Speedy Lock and Save, and one check to Smitty's Towing. Number three, the award of project number FYO7-S-2, the U Street and Megalito Channel Pedestrian Bridge, with the amendment from last meeting that the relocation of the sewer line will be paid for out of utility funds. Item number four, approval of ordinance 1584, the nuisance code enforcement administrative citation tools, the second reading. Item number five, proposed adoption, resolution number 578412, intention to levy assessments for fiscal year 2012-13, preliminary approval of an engineer's report and provide notice of a public hearing for the park maintenance and city pool assessment, number 2002-01. Number six, compliance with Assembly Bill number 2514, adopting a resolution directing staff to initiate a study to determine the appropriate energy storage ES procurement targets. Item number seven, the single-member services agreement between the city of Lompoc and the Northern California Power Agency, resolution 578112, and item number eight was pulled. Are there any items that someone would like to have pulled or would like to have a separate vote on? Councilmember Costa.
Mayor Lynn, can we please have a separate vote for consent calendar item number four?
Absolutely. And are there any items anyone wants to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion to approve consent calendar items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7.
So moved.
Move by, and a second.
A second.
All right. And I got to write that down. And could we vote, please? Is there any discussion? No, okay, vote, please. And that passes 5-0. And now I'd accept a motion for item five only, four, I'm sorry, item four only. Councilmember Martner?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And it's been moved in second for item number four. Is there any discussion? And can we vote, please? Now move to our public hearing item, consideration of a text amendment, Planning Division File Number TA 12-03, the City of Lompoc Municipal Code Section, Chapter 17064, industrial zone. I need to talk about one thing before we start on that. Because this involves two zones, it involves the business park zone and the industrial zone, I'm going to take this, the discussion of the business park zone first and talk about those things to do with it, and then when we get to the industrial zone, I'll need to recuse myself, and the mayor pro tem will take over because I own a piece of property in the industrial zone, and there are two changes on here that would affect me. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. Good evening, councilmembers. This evening's hearing is for staff to listen to the council's discussion regarding the specifics of the proposed changes and-
They're working something out over here.
Thank you. And following that discussion, staff will return with a professional analysis of the changes to the June 12th council meeting. And that concludes my staff report.
Could you briefly discuss how we came to have two zones, one business park, one industrial, and what the principal differences are between them, please?
We generally had a business park zone that was separate and was pretty much defined by the Central Avenue specific plan up in the Central Avenue area. That plan was for the development of properties that were facing onto Central Avenue. As things changed in that area, we repealed the Central Avenue specific plan and combined the business park to simplify the regulations. There were a lot of very specific regulations and a lot of requirements in that business park that were kind of a hindrance and difficult for people. So we did go ahead and combine them and make them one individual industrial zone with the two components in it.
And the other property now that's in the business park zone, if I recall, is the former Grafco property.
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Martner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it has just been brought up to my attention when you mentioned that you have to recuse yourself over some aspect of this discussion, but you were the first one to suggest these changes. So why can you suggest changes and then you have to recuse yourself in the discussion? This makes no sense.
Through the mayor, I'll attempt to answer your question, but it's not going to be clear. I'm telling you that upfront because the area of law is not clear. A member of the council, as a member of the public, can propose things to the council, and so it's okay for a councilperson who's a member of the public, obviously, to suggest things. It could be that the manner and way things are being suggested may have had a different approach that could have been taken, but that's not really the substance of the issue. The issue is whether or not someone who's a member of the public can propose things. Part of the issue that's before you now, or your question, is really a result of the way this process has progressed. When it first, I'm going to use the word, when it first dawned on me that we may have some issue was when I was looking at the Lompoc Record, and I saw on the front page there was an individual standing next to a building who was a member of the Economic Development Committee, and I knew that you had just directed the Economic Development Committee to discuss the commercial areas, the commercial zoning changes. As you know, we had already had a discussion about the town center, and we already had issues of people recusing themselves from the discussion on town center. So that was in the forefront of my mind when we were thinking of things and issues of conflicts of interest. When I saw the newspaper article, and I said, "We need to be careful because now the Economic Development Committee is going to be discussing this. We need to make sure that the Economic Development Committee has a discussion about whether there are any conflicts that we need to be worried about, and in addition to that, we have the Planning Commission who have similar issues." It was a result of that that caused me to meet with the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Committee. Because of the nature of the Economic Development Committee, they actually didn't have a conflict, any of the people that either own or rent property there, because of the nature of the aspects of the provisions in the conflicts of interest law. When I had the discussion regarding the Planning Commission, because it's a different type of body, it's not just a recommending body, there was a commissioner who did have a conflict, and that was, he was advised, and he correctly recused himself during the discussion, but he too is a member of the public, so he was able to talk as a member of the public. Because of that discussion that I had with the planning commissioner, I realized I had to have the same conversation with the mayor because, and we already had, if I will, if you will, we already had taken care of the issue with the mayor pro tem because the focus was on the town center, and he was already recusing himself from the town center. At the time we were focusing on the town center, first, if you may recall, the mayor did recuse himself when discussions, not early on in this, but early on, two years, right after he first became mayor, he also recused himself from discussing town center business because we were focusing on the fact that he had interest in town center properties. He then no longer has interest in town center properties, so my antenna, if you will, sort of went down, forgetting that there was also interest that he had in commercial properties and industrial properties. Again, the antenna didn't go back up until I saw that newspaper article. As soon as that happened, then the mayor and I had a discussion, and that's where we are today. He's now recusing himself because of the discussion we had, which was prompted by my looking at the newspaper. So I apologize to the council for not having the antenna up soon enough, often enough, but again, I think that even if the antenna had been up, the conversation I may have had with the mayor is, when you're sharing things, don't do it when you're sitting here, do it when you're out there. So that's where we are.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that you talk about your antennas, but what about the mayor's antenna? I mean, he, we as elected officials have a duty to not use our seat for our personal interest. So we have that antenna up all the time as elected officials. So I'm surprised that the mayor apparently doesn't have his antenna up and comes to this council, speaks as the mayor. I would like to discuss, and I would like to have this council discuss, changes to the industrial zoning without telling us that he is part of the industrial zoning and that these changes will affect him. I think the mayor should have recused himself and become a member of the public and request that this council looks at his documents and considers them. But we took it as, well, this is part of the mayor's thing, that he is, you know, going and is going to make all kinds of changes. But it was not forthcoming to let us know that there was a personal economic interest in it. So I really have a lot of issues with that, and I really would say that at this point in time, this recommendation has to go back, and the mayor needs to become the member of the public and request to this council that this council looks at these recommendations as a member of the public, not as the mayor of Lompoc.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. City Attorney, I do have a question. I'm sorry if I misunderstood. In regards to the commercial zoning discussion, is it your understanding, then, that at that point, the mayor should have recused himself?
I think it would have been better if I had suggested to the mayor that he do it from out here than being sitting up here.
Okay, so that, I guess that would then have shifted probably the flow of the discussion, right? Because then he would have been presenting the information from there, and staff wouldn't have included it in the staff report originally? Is that how it would have gone, or was he, would he have been able to have it submitted and included?
The direction of what staff did was the council direction, so if the council had ended up deciding not to have the staff do it that way, they wouldn't have. But it was more of a, the council saying, okay, here's the process we're going to use. We're going to have, first, we're going to have the council have input, then we're going to have the staff come back and with some, well, first, we're going to have the things handed out, then we're going to have some initial input from the council, then we're going to have staff give input on what the council direction was, and then ultimately bring it to the planning commission for the public hearings and here, for the public hearings.
Understood, but once again, the information provided to us, like you said, in that initial step for our review, it wouldn't have been included in our packet. That's really what I'm getting to.
No, 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 I don't know that that, I wouldn't characterize it that way. I would characterize it, then, when the mayor handed out the information, did he not do it when he was sitting there? Maybe that would have been a better thing than, and do it from down there. But again, that's sort of a form over substance. I know it's an important form over substance, but it is a form over substance. Subsequent to that, that's, that information would have been, just like it is now, would have been part of this because the staff is bringing it to you.
Thank you.
So what got this whole conversation with the city attorney and I going was the conversation we had, he had with a planning commission member, and I said, yeah, you know, I'm going to have the same problem when it comes to the industrial zone. And that was how we discussed how this could be separated because I want to talk about the business park because of the lack of success that it's had over the years, and I really don't have anything to say about the industrial zone, anyway. So, Councilmember Starbuck?
So what do we do at this point? Are we going to kick the can down the road, or are we going to abstain the mayor and do it? I guess that's the question.
No, we're going to go ahead with the item that's on here, and you guys can, you know, you can vote yes or no without me. But the conversation I'd like to have before that is with regard to the business park area, which is the meat of the issue, not the industrial zone. Councilmember Martner?
I will oppose to have a discussion on the industrial zone until a public member requests this council to discuss this issue, not the mayor. So I would like for this council to follow proper procedure pertaining conflict of interest.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Can we do it on consent?
City Attorney?
At the risk of being seen as a sixth councilperson, which is not my intent, an option is, as Councilmember Martner said, she made a suggestion. She's making a motion. She could make a motion. If she makes the motion and it's seconded, it needs to be voted on. If that vote doesn't succeed, then the item that's on the council agenda tonight would go forward.
Okay, and I wouldn't vote on that because I see the issue with this. Because I'm willing to talk about the business park, but I'm not willing to talk about the industrial because the industrial doesn't matter, anyway. So I guess the question is, do we want to separate the issues and deal with them, or do we want to stop, or do we want, okay, so we got a motion. I need a second.
The motion is that we do not discuss the industrial zoning recommendations because they were done in an unduly process by having the mayor requesting this from the mayor's seat and not from the public's seat. And therefore, I don't think it can be discussed tonight because it was not done properly.
Okay, and you said industrial. Was your intent to say industrial- Was your intent to say industrial and business park or just to say industrial?
Industrial because that's where you have the conflict of interest.
Okey doke. And a second.
Mary Lynn, I have a question for the city attorney. The legal opinion on that is, we would be safe going either way, is that correct? Because the way you said, it's form over substantive.
I would say yes because of the number of times it's going to come to you, which is, the remedy in the Brown Act, if there's a, or the conflict of interest issue, is if there's a violation, then it has to be redone, it's going to come back to you anyway. So.
But do you feel that this instance is a violation?
No, I'm not going to go that far. I'm going to say that if it had been presented differently, meaning from out there, it would have been clearer and so.
It was more of a violation then?
Because I'm not a judge, so I'm not going to declare whether something a violation or not.
So the legal counsel is saying that you do not know whether this is a violation and we'll have to go to a judge?
No, I'm saying in my, in my position as city attorney, I think it would be ill-advised for me to be from the dais saying that the city has somehow violated something because that's not of assistance to my client.
Yes, you need to protect your client. Correct.
My client being the city. Correct.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm sorry, hold on. Let's see if we can get a second so we can go forward.
Yeah, I'm just very curious. Because this document was presented at a public meeting, that's where I would weigh the difference at. This wasn't something that was slipped out to everybody here. This was done in front of everybody in presence, everybody watching. I mean, I guess the first thing we could do is admit a mistake on it, but to stop the progress on it, I think is wrong.
Okay, still looking for a second. Okay, dies for lack of a second.
I would like to say that it's not a stop in the process. I think all the mayor needs to do is to get up there and say, as a member of the public, I would like to submit this to the council. So it's not about a stop in the process, but whichever way, you win.
Okay, so now, back to where I was. Unless there's an objection from all of you, I would like to engage in the discussion of the business, of the business park and talk about the issues that I have seen with it over the last 30 years. When we get to a discussion of the industrial zone, any changes to that, I won't participate. So here's the philosophical question that is before us tonight and I think we'll probably want to ask Lucille some more questions. So this is kind of the long look back. We had a business park zone. Lucille, when was that changed for Central Avenue? Was that 2001, do you remember? Guesstimate.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
So we had a business park zone in 2001 that was extremely restrictive and a good example of what that caused would be to look at the Central Plastics formerly packed Tuco and the amount of parking and the landscaping and all those things. And the end result of that was that we had a business park zone created in 1976 that through the course up until 2002, had a grand total of two structures built to the west of Walmart. Some were built behind where the Dodge dealer was, which was, that was also BP if I remember correctly. So the thought of everyone, including the council at the time, was that that ordinance was too restrictive and some of the issues had to do with the amount of parking and the amount of landscaping and a number of other things. So in 2000, whatever it was, the council amended that and reduced the parking requirement, reduced the landscaping requirement somewhat and adopted a grid formula for what could be approved or not approved and by what process, whether it would be approved, conditionally approved or not approved. And then that process came forward. As a result of that process, three, two buildings and a parking lot were also built there. The comparison might be to either any of the many projects in the Santa Maria Valley or the two areas in Buellton where they had a similar business park and built multiple structures and we didn't build much of anything. The other comparison I think is very valuable is that the Wine Ghetto in the Sabani Industrial Park is in industrial and the Greffco property is in VP or Business Park and has those additional requirements. So during the last 14 years, while the Greffco property sat vacant and people repeatedly tried to make something happen there, the Wine Ghetto flourished under substantially less restrictions. And those are kind of the two things that are, that are, stand out in my mind with regard to them. So the question philosophically, and I say it that way for the five of us to decide tonight, is if those restrictions that are in place in the business park are so detrimental to using the property that they basically should be changed or that if those are truly protections against bad things, then we should not change them? And now, Lucille, maybe you could kind of talk about the differences.
When it came back to the council, we removed some of the restrictive conditions that were imposed and made the use list more similar and we made the development standards more open. So that was how we went forward with it and those standards have been in place and we've not really had many requests for development in that area at this point.
And would you, just in a general sense, would you say that the business park standards are more restrictive than the industrial standards?
I would say they were minimally more restrictive. I think that there may be some additional, the intent of the business park was to have a more attractive appearance. The intent of the industrial was to have a more heavy manufacturing area in it. So they were looked at as two separate, both within the industrial use, but as two separate types of appearance. The business park intent was for development where a number of businesses could meet and share similar facilities.
And overall, thinking across the entire city, would you say that the uses are really much different today because of, I know the world's changed. So the types of businesses that we see in the industrial park and the types of businesses that we see, I'm sorry, in the business park and the types of businesses we see in the industrial zone, are they pretty similar today?
I believe they're similar today. The intention when the Central Avenue business plan was put together was to try and attract some high-tech businesses over near the airport and to have landscape areas where it would be generally just a more attractive business park use.
And with regard to those landscape areas, would you say the ones up by the street are more valuable than the ones back in the property or do you have any thoughts on that from an aesthetic standpoint?
Generally, the frontage are the ones that you see from the right-of-way. They're the ones that are most viewed by the citizens. Anything that's a street frontage.
I was, I was over at Central Plastics looking at theirs and they've got 10-foot planters down both sides of the property. They were built under the long, long ago plan, so, yeah. Okay. All right, let's have a little discussion of it. Who would like to start? Don't everybody jump at once? Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's real obvious to me that the plan we had, you know, 10, 12 years ago for the business park has not been successful. We can continue the plan for another 15, 20 years with the same results or we can look at making some changes and hopefully make some progress in this business park. So I'm all in favor of making the change, making it less restrictive and seeing if we can get some development in that part of our town.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to concur with Councilmember Lingle on this. I find most of what I'm, the changes to be pretty much what was already in there, you know.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I do have an addition. Under definitions, 17.064.020, it lists wineries and wine tasting rooms, but I wouldn't like to have that limited. I would like that to be opened up for, you know, it could be alcohol production, microbrewery, that kind of thing. I don't think it needs to be limited to, I mean, granted, we have many more wineries and wine tasting rooms, but allowing that to stay open.
Yeah, and I think, having heard recent conversations about it, both beer and distillation, you're right, absolutely. Anybody have a difficulty with that?
I don't, but I, is that covered under the very top of this, the limited accessory use where it offers the same 20%?
I think it would be good to include it. Go ahead, Councilmember Costa.
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
I won't comment on this subject because I think that it was put on the agenda in a wrongful, wrongful manner.
Okey doke. Are there any other items with regard to the business park that someone would like to discuss? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm really looking forward, Ms. Breeze, I'm really looking forward to your analysis of whether or not you feel the city needs to have two different designations or if you feel comfortable with just the one. I personally don't have the experience to know what other communities do, so please provide information as to what works well for other communities and what your staff would suggest. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items on this? Lucille, are there any other questions you'd like to ask before I step down on this to the other item?
No, thank you.
These items right here need to be dealt with. That one, that one, and that one. I'm on the page that doesn't have a number. Would be the third sheet on the front side and those, yeah, those, those would be, those standards, those changes in standards would affect both parcels, so.
So that one is 050.
I believe the highlighted material was that, that was suggested. You know, and I do, I think I just want to make a general comment in regards to Councilmember Martner's concerns and that, you know, I would hope that staff doesn't use this as the complete basis for their analysis and information. I really want you to know that, you know, please feel comfortable providing additional information, analysis, outside ideas beyond what we've given you and understand that this is just one of what could be many suggestions, especially from the public as well. Thank you.
Yeah, well, the only changes that are proposed within this industrial are the maximum allowable height, 35 feet or three stories has been added. Fences general eight feet high or equal to building height not to exceed 15 foot, so, or equal to building height not to exceed 15 feet is the change. And then fences adjacent to residential areas is a whole change. It's a new 10 feet high wrought iron metal panel, slump rock, stucco or other decorative material. And that's what the topic of the industrial zone will be, so we'll go ahead and we'll start with Councilmember Martner. We'll move this way. Any concerns on the property development standards?
I will state again that I would not like to discuss this agenda item because it was brought to the council in the wrongful manner.
Councilmember Costa.
The other thing that is highlighted here is the maximum allowable height, 35 feet or three stories. And I know we had this discussion previously, so I'm just curious if we should stay consistent with what our previous suggestion was to staff.
I think that the concern here, and don't hold me to an expert on this, but 35 feet could almost become four-story.
Right, but in the discussion that we had, did we not take out three stories? We just said, we kept it at that.
Not in industrial. We didn't, we didn't have this discussion.
Right, but I'm saying in the previous discussion about stories, we took out the idea that there had to be a limit on the amount of stories that there were. So why are we saying on one, you know, what, it was residential, I think it was?
It was residential we discussed.
Right, so I feel, I mean, with industrial.
We went ahead and moved forward with three-story on that.
Ms. Breeze, do you recall?
The limit was 35 feet in the R3 zone.
35 feet, but there was no discussion, we took out the stories.
That's correct.
So that's, I just want to do the same thing for this, to be consistent. We're talking about the compact urban forum, building up, let's just take out that, three stories.
Councilmember Lingle.
Well, I don't mind taking note. That's not what I recall. I recall including three stories, but if that's, if that's what we said, then I'll agree. My only comment is, and I wish Chief Dabney were still here because I, the increasing the height of the fences from eight feet, I recall in this zone, it was very common for our police department to have calls of burglaries over there. It seems like people can leap an eight-foot fence pretty easily. The 10-feet-high wrought iron metal, and it's going to be a decorative fence, it's slump rock, so I think that's appropriate, but the eight-feet fence, or the eight-foot fence, I believe, was probably not tall enough to prevent someone from, just from jumping over, so I like that addition.
Council comment?
In regards to fences, I don't know the reasoning behind the 10-feet-high or the description. Not that I'm opposed to it, but, you know, I just have trust in staff that they'll decide if that's necessary or unnecessary.
Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and we'll hold a public comment in industrial before the mayor's brought back in.
About what? My name's Tom Davidson. I live at 7320 Santos Road in Lompoc, sort of, at least that's my mailing address. I represent the owners of the former Greffco site at 300 North 12th Street. I am familiar with development in other cities, having built a number of buildings in Buellton and so one of the things that troubles me about the business park zoning is that it allows wineries and it allows production of wine and it doesn't allow tasting room. If you're in an industrial zone, you can have a tasting room and there are some conditions that are required of a tasting room. It has to be certain size and so on and so forth, but in business park, you can make wine, but you can't sell wine. Now, you can get a tasting room, but you have to get a conditional use permit. So that requires that you submit a whole bunch of paperwork, pay a bunch of money to the city, wait for two months to get an approval, which they traditionally do. And it just seems like a waste of the business person's time to go through the process and the staff's time. Why don't you, in this business park zoning, if you're going to allow tasting rooms, why don't you just put down the conditions that, okay, you can make wine, you can have a tasting room, but to have a tasting room, it has to have these things. room, but to have a tasting room, it has to have these things, and just do it. Regarding the fence thing, one of the things that always troubles me about fences, you say, it's got to be wrought iron, it's got to be slump stone, what if I want to build a brick fence, or what if I want to do river? I mean, when you specify, you start specifying what it is that you have to make it out of, it really limits, it's the city trying to be an architect or a designer. Seems to me like if it's ten feet, it has to be attractive, seems to me there ought to be some language in there that gives some latitude, and who knows, three years from now, there might be some other great material that'll make a good-looking fence.
What would that language be, Mr. Davidson? I'd love to include it right now.
Pardon me?
What would that language be?
It says "or other decorative."
I mean, is that broadening it out enough?
Well, maybe so. I just, I don't like to see it, if it says it has to be wrought iron, or this or that, then you restrict how things could look.
Because the change is ten-feet-high wrought iron, metal panel, slump rock, stucco, or other decorative material.
If it says "or other decorative," then I think you're okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle?
No, I'm sorry, I was just going to bring up the point, the other decorative.
Public comment?
While they walk up, I just want to point out that the fences for security don't include that other decorative material. I just want to make it as easy as possible for everyone.
That's the one that links razor wire, barbed, chain link. But that's an existing--
Councilmen, councilmembers, I'm Mary Saladino, as just a citizen, and it is very important for you to consider what the wineries need in order to advertise their business, and they usually have particular design artists to help them determine how they would like to advertise their business. If you put all of these restrictions, who's going to want to come and build a winery here? I mean, it is important to have some reasonable restrictions, but you cannot be specific in so many details that you restrict their ability to make their facility look according to how they would like to have it look in order to attract the public, and these people know how to do it. So maybe the height and the size is reasonable, I don't know. I'm certainly not an expert and don't know, but I don't think the council is either. I think it might be very helpful to ask the wineries, like this gentleman who just spoke, I don't know if he represents a winery or not, but he seems to know some of the needs of an architect's design. So if you limit them, you're restricting and you're causing your growth to be restricted. And I think it is totally improper to suggest that the council is trying to do some shenanigans around here. It's very important for everyone to have a voice, even a mayor, and each of you as well. Thank you.
My name is Still Yedidya De Vries, and I'm still pretty short. Three quick comments. First, I feel a little bit like I'm breaking, crossing a picket line, speaking here while Councilmember Martner has raised such vociferous objections, and so I'd like to apologize to her for that. Second, I'm a little bit flabbergasted, confused that, that one of the, what I saw as one of the major changes being proposed was not discussed, namely the exemption from certain provisions of chapter seventeen dot one one six dot zero two zero. I'm just sort of surprised that the council did not address those changes while did talk about fence heights. And third, having now sat through a couple of council meetings and planning commission meetings and economic development workshops, it seems that this council has the idea that changing to the zoning laws is, you know, the key to economic development, and I'm being a little bit surprised by that attitude, that, that idea that, you know, if we change, all we need to do is change the zoning ordinances, and that that is going to make a huge difference in our economic, in the economic future of Lompoc. It might be part of it, but it seems to be being treated as a very central component of our approach to the future, and that just seems a bit odd to me. Thank you, and have a lovely evening.
Can you please cite the chapter number that you did previously?
It's, I, you know, trying, trying, the council's moving the tablet, so I'm trying to follow suit here. Seventeen dot one one six dot zero two zero. It's, and the two provisions are the destruction, damage, or obsolescence of structures provision and the cessation of use provisions, unless I've been looking at the wrong document, but it was the one linked to from the agenda today.
My name is Robert Schmiedeck. I'm resident of Lompoc. First of all, I'd like to say what I've seen in the changes to the zoning. I showed up a few days early and went over to the clerk's desk and got a copy, read it. It's a good plan. Why one of the councilmen, I can't address councilmen as individuals, I'm familiar with that, why one of you would, you know, puts us, just exacerbating excoriations against our mayor, you know, can only be explained with an encyclopedic dearth of knowledge about what's at hand here. What is at hand here is the future of this community, and this is part of the future of this community, opening up the zoning, making it possible for businesses to do business. There's nothing nefarious about what's going on. I was on a planning commission once, and as we studied the Brown Act, it was about discussing things from other than at the dais or in public. It was about making a decision in the back room. That was the whole purpose of the Brown Act, and it was the back-room decisions. I see none here, none at all. What I see is, is someone trying to do a gotcha, and it really hurts my feelings to see my council, or any member of this council, trying to do a gotcha for God knows what reason. You got a good plan here, folks, and I'm really pleased that you've got the courage to move forward with it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and we'll call the mayor back in. We've covered the industrial changes there, then.
Councilmember Starbuck, I actually have a few things to discuss.
Sure.
Briefly, I do want to state that there, as far as we've gone so far, the discussion of the tasting room allocation of twenty percent or under would still be allowed. Anything over twenty percent would still be conditionally permitted, or hopefully through the minor use permit process. So as recommended, that's actually staying the same. That was recently implemented. It seems like it's working well thus far, so I just want to make that clear, that that is remaining as is.
It actually increased, didn't it? Because wasn't it fifteen percent? This increased it to twenty?
Ms. Breeze, can you speak to that?
Yes, generally accessory uses were fifteen percent.
So increasing five percent of the square footage, but other than that, there are no current amendments as proposed. It's not that there can't be, or that staff may not have some recommendation. So getting to chapter seventeen point one one six point zero two zero, I'm glad that this was brought forward by a community member, thank you very much, because there's actually, it's just a minor tweak that I disagree with, and that was, it reads, "As Proposed," the cessation of use provisions do not apply to industrial buildings. When a building is repurposed or has been vacant for any length of time, the same development standards shall apply as when the building was originally constructed, and I think that that basically, instead of having a grandfather clause, that kind of just takes out any requirement in between, and there's a lot that could have happened, a lot of time that could have passed. So I agree that there's actually, I've heard quite a few issues with that grandfather clause in this occurring to folks where it's been vacant, and then they can no longer use it for that use. So there's clearly some discussion that needs to take place on this, on this item, but I don't agree that it shall apply as when the building was originally constructed. I think that that's, for my purposes, a bit extreme. Council, did you see, do you have the same concern, or how do you feel about it?
Phrase that again for me, just because it took me a minute to find where you were.
Sure, so do you see the cessation of use provision in chapter seventeen point one one six point zero two--
Yes, do not apply to industrial buildings.
Right, so it's saying that, as, as proposed, that when a building is repurposed or has been vacant for any, for any length of time, the same development standards shall apply as when the building was originally constructed? And Ms. Breeze, can you talk to, talk about currently what the case would be in an industrial area for a building, a repurposed building that had been vacant?
Any new development in, in industrial or any area would need to meet the codes that are currently in place.
And is there any grandfather clause as it stands now?
Well, the building would be looked at individually if it were a historic building, if there was a use that was not, a portion of the building that was not being affected by a change. So the building would be looked at and evaluated, but if it were an entire change, a new development plan that someone was proposing a change of use, then they would need to meet the requirements of the building code, the ADA requirements, the parking standards that were brand-new use.
Right, and I think that therein lies, I think, the issue. We have one extreme that we currently have, and then as proposed here, it's kind of like the other side, so I would like to see some middle ground there, where there is some leeway in the sense that if it's been vacant for a certain period of time, you, you would have no issues getting it re-tenanted, but if it's passed too long, then you will be required to, you know, to review these certain things?
Well, there's some building code standards that we cannot waive, and those building code standards do have to do with the accessibility, and they have to do with public safety issues regarding fire safety, fire suppression, and that's why each building needs to be reviewed individually when the project comes in.
Correct, so, but beyond ADA compliance and beyond some of these other required compliances, there are some restrictions put on by the city that can be reviewed and possibly, you know, looked at in the sense of a grandfather clause.
A new development plan would go to the planning commission, and the planning commission does have some, definitely has some flexibility in looking at a site. We also do have a code section that allows the planning commission to make a finding under a conditional use permit. There are three findings that are required that would allow the use of a building if there was, if it was so restricted by the new zoning requirements, they would not be able to utilize it. So we do have quite a bit of flexibility within our zoning code as it is.
Okay, so I'm curious, I was hoping somebody from public comment may, I was hoping John Lynn was interested in making comment as to why he made some of these suggestions, because as far as I was concerned from the community, the concern that I was hearing was there were certain buildings, and people were getting frustrated because maybe they had been vacant for a while, and they were having a really difficult time getting folks to have the ability to, to be tenants in that building. So I'm curious if we can make that process easier in some cases.
Perhaps in, when we come back with our discussion and analysis, we'll be able to explain what our existing policies are, and that may be able to clarify some of that confusion.
And would you agree with the statement, that cessation of use statement that's presented here, actually, I would just like you to quickly comment on this, what is your opinion of that here, this, the same development standard shall apply as when the building was originally constructed? Do you see issues with that because of these required building?
It would be very difficult to monitor.
Thank you. Please look into that, thank you.
Real quick, does this cessation of use in this chapter that's listed currently apply to industrial buildings?
Well, we do, we have issues regarding a building that has not been occupied for some time.
So it applies?
So if there is a building that has not been utilized, it would have to come back and be reviewed per the current development standards.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I would like to make a comment regarding the public comment period. What I was referring to was not a Brown Act violation. What I was referring to was a conflict of interest, and a conflict of interest, it gets upheld by FPPC. And if a member of the public today wanted to listen to this council meeting and learn that something was brought up to the agenda by the mayor, and then he had to recuse himself because there was a conflict of interest, that member of the public may decide to take that issue with FPPC, and that may actually cost the cities some money. It may cost legal fees and so forth. So for the protection of the city, it is important for council members and mayors to follow the process. It would have been very simple for the mayor to step down and as a member of the public to provide the information that he provided to this council. And let me tell you, how many members of the public do we have that bring documentation to us, and we include them in agenda items as we have included them? I probably, since I've been here in this seat, this is the first time. So just let it be known that the issue is an issue that pertains FPPC, and as such, it can potentially impact financially this city. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So I didn't get the feedback in regards to that cessation of use provision. I, you know, I want staff not to take this wholesale whatsoever, and would like their comment in that regard. Is that something--
I totally, I concur, absolutely. I mean, have you received enough input?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you. I was going to make the same, same suggestion, but I understand why it's there. There are some buildings in this community that were, had become vacant for one reason or another, and now are almost useless buildings unless we can provide them some avenue for reoccupying themselves. But I have no problem, and I agree that the planning department should take a close look at this, but definitely, when you're looking at it, be reasonable and make sure that we can find some, some avenues for the buildings to be reoccupied. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. That just brought something to my mind, that of course, what we want to ensure here, of course, is safety, that's a big thing, but possibly looking at a compartmentalized improvement to development standard where it wouldn't all be required right away, but that there would be an extended time period for certain things to get done, and potentially would be easier to finance that way for these building owners.
No other discussion? Mary Lynn? Five minutes?
Okay, welcome back. Did you take any votes on anything? Or was it all discussion? Okay. All right, moving right along to item number ten. Consideration of agricultural water rate, rate or rates. Consideration of agricultural water rate, rate or rates.
Mayor, council members, I'm handing out the original letter and the response to the letter that was the reason for this staff item. On March 5th of this year, the property owner of the Griffica property submitted a letter requesting consideration of an agricultural water rate for the properties, for the farming of the existing acreage that is there. The, the request I'm making tonight is to incorporate an evaluation of agricultural water rate into the ongoing water and wastewater study that is currently going on. In that study, we will be looking at the existing water rate structure as well as alternatives. And to give a little bit of background, as far back as I could find records, which is 1984, the city has had a uniformed commodity charge for water, whether it's used by a school, a city, a home, anything, it's all based on the quantity of water that you're using. In addition to that, it's also based on the size of the meter that you're using. So the rate that you're charged is based on the meter size and the amount of water you use. As a meter size goes up, the monthly meter charge goes up commensurately because you have a much bigger capacity to get water in a six-inch meter than you do in a five-eighths inch meter. Some of this is, some of the staff report is background information because it will be very useful in the discussions when we get to the point, if you want to incorporate this in with the water and wastewater study to evaluate whether we want to continue with the existing commodity charge the way it is or to look at alternatives. On page three of the staff report, I quote some figures out of a recent study by AWWA, which is American Water Works Association. The vast majority of water rates are either uniform or increasingly blocks, but still uniform across the entire base. There are some instances where class structures are used, and I quote a couple of communities that do have a class structure that we could model a possible structure for the city which would include an agricultural rate. Will Dan Financial, which is doing our study, recently concluded a study for the city of Glendale, and Glendale did switch from a commodity charge that was uniformed to a class-based structure, which in their case is single-family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial. Those are the classes that they are considering. Based on my review of the AWWA information, there are other categories that could be the categories we want, may want to look at, including agricultural, governmental, which might be cities, us, schools, and the hospital district. All those kind of things would be evaluated during the study that is going on that will probably be coming back to both you and to the utility commission, probably in the month of June, if not June, then July. The last paragraph before the fiscal impact is really the, the main driver as to the suggestion that this be considered as part of the overall water and wastewater study in the fact that changing any of the rate structure for the utilities, for the water utility or the wastewater utility would be, would have to be considered under Prop 218, which is the valuation of rates for the entire utility. That will happen as part of the water and wastewater study that we're doing, but it's at the end of the process. To try to go through that process for a single rate category that's being requested and then do it a month or two down the line for the whole entire structure, just seems like a, not the most efficient way of doing this. The reason I'm going through this is if you back up, we have a uniform rate structure, therefore their, the request that was made by the property owner to apply an agricultural rate, water rate, it just doesn't exist right now. So to be able to make that exist, we'd have to go through the 218 process and the, the rate review process that's currently going on. A lot of the information that's in here will help guide that process in June and July, and it will help you determine whether, which way that we want to structure our rates in the future would be best for the community. And at this point in time, I would request that we go through the rate study as we're going and incorporate this request from the property owner into that study so we can evaluate it concurrently with everything else that's, they're doing.
Okay, let me, let me get Tom up here. There, there's something that got lost between the discussion and the letter, so I think the staff went down a different road because of the way the letter was written. The discussion that you don't know about that went forward in the past was whether or not this particular property owner could get untreated water, and we, way back when, looked at three alternatives. One was a city-owned well across the river and the use of the pipe across the bridge that I got authorization from Caltrans for, but subsequently that well didn't seem like it could put out enough water. And then the next discussion, which Ron Stasi brought forward, was the opportunity to use untreated water off the manifold of well number 11, but no rate exists for that. And so that's kind of where, that got lost when this letter got written, and I, I apologize, I didn't, didn't pay good attention to the letter when it came in. Did I get it all, Tom, or, okay, he's nodding up and down. So kind of where this was going with regard to them was sort of back in the same direction that I talked about in the past for schools and parks, and I have some updated, updated information on that that I'll share, but let's go for questions. Counsel Member Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At one time, that property did have some wells on it, is that correct?
We, we paid to have those decommissioned. I'll answer for Ron, because I asked that question of him.
Okay.
We paid them and, we filled them, right? Okay, got it.
Okay, and it's, we can't recommission them?
No, they're good and gone.
Okay, so water, commercial, residential water, the cost of water, it includes, I mean, it costs, includes the, the price of now processing as we flush the water down, the drain and everything to, at our water treatment plant, is that correct? That's part of our cost?
The wastewater rate is a separate rate. There's no current waste facility that's operating that I understand at this property, so they're only being charged, the water utility, if they used it, they would only be charged for the water utility and the water meter.
So no additional charge, okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Counsel Member Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. On page three of five of the staff report, it cites that the city of Longbook has not participated in this survey, which has been conducted every two years since 2005, and I was just curious why that was?
I did some inquiries with the utility department. The staff that's in my department that may have been around at that point in time isn't here, so I, I just don't have a good answer for that. I, I know that we do studies of our own internally through the utilities department, but that's mainly to do a review of all of our utilities and not, not this specifically, so I don't have an answer.
Okay. Also, I, I guess my question, I think, is going to be a little bit different now that we're shifting what we were originally, what I thought we were originally looking for, because what I was curious is if this potential change, or at least looking into this potential change of using a class structure would benefit properties within our community, understanding that it's all going to come down to the fiscal impact, correct? So if, you know, the money has to come from somewhere, is, is the bottom line.
The, the utility as a whole has a revenue requirement that has to be met to meet its obligations. How that revenue requirement is split up amongst classes, if we go to that, would probably determine what the, the class rate, the class cost is, and then those costs are, would be attributable, would be converted into a rate structure. Everybody, the reason the classes are, why a class structure is used is it's been determined that the amount of use of the system is different for a commercial application than it is for a residential application than it is for a large residential application for, for multifamilies. So the peak load on the system may be different because of the differences, so there's, there's a cost structure that's different because of that. And that's why some agencies go to a class-based structure, because it more equitably transfers the cost of use to each of those classes, whereas the commodity charge that is uniform just spreads out over everybody and doesn't, doesn't consider the extra costs that are, may be attributable to just one class.
So what that may result in then would be higher costs for some folks, and we aren't really looking at lowering costs for anybody, it's just increasing the cost for those who have higher demand on the system?
Depending on the class structure, it would very likely have different rates for different classes. And whether they're higher or lower than they are right now, I would probably expect that some would be higher and some would be lower.
Okay, I, you know, I kind of feel like when, in looking at this survey, there's so few municipalities that actually institute that class structure, not that I don't want to look into it, especially if it's not additional cost for this rate, water and wastewater rate study anyway, but I'm not, you know, sure if it's something we even really want to continue looking at. Thank you.
You mean the class? The class?
Yeah. And Brad, was, it seems to me from a conversation long ago, it wasn't the, the difference in the meter size, wasn't that designed to try to accommodate some of those issues to, the, the monthly base charge for a larger meter was to accommodate some of those cost differences?
Well, the, looking at the cost differential for the different meters, it's strictly a formula that's based on the capacity that can go through the meter. So the six-inch meter that's cost $1,226, it has that much more capacity than a one-inch meter or five, five-inch meter. It doesn't take in any consideration, anything else but the volume of water that can be delivered to that property based on the meter size.
So it's a fee to have that much water available when you need it? And fire connections are different, they're, they're a lower rate?
There are different rate structure, I didn't include that in here because there's a lot fewer, there's about 100 of those.
Yeah. Counsel Member Mortner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Out of curiosity, what is the zoning for Mr. Sotovic's property? Does anybody know what the zoning is?
BP.
A business park.
That's for the building, the area of the city farm?
Commercial, so, so the farming is in a commercial zone, and according to that zone, they can grow vegetables and sell them.
Hey, Tom, you're going to have to come up, because now you're getting.
So this is under a conditional use permit, the approval is under, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is we're talking about agricultural water rates, and I want to know and understand, I mean, I'm sorry, okay, I want to know and I understand, is, is this going to apply to all zoning? Or is there a restriction as to who and how this new rate is going to be applied? For example, here we have a business park that had to go through a conditional use permit, correct?
There's two parts.
First of all, my name's Tom Davidson, you're asking me questions I can't answer regarding rates, although I will say about rates, he fails to tell you that there's a huge impact fee when you buy a meter. And then the impact fee for a six-inch meter is much different than an impact fee for the five-eighths inch meter. You pay so much a month for the meter, but when you first put it in, there's a big impact fee that he's not telling you about. Regarding our particular property, or the property that I represent, it happens to be the entrance to the city. And if we come to the city and say, what can you do to help us in trying to develop this property, basically, they say nothing. I mean, there's no economic incentives, there is no economic incentives at all. And so we're going to put a bunch of money in this building, try and make it functional, and we just thought, gee, maybe you guys would like to participate in making the place look clean. I've only lived here 20 years, and it's looked terrible for the 20 years that I've lived here. Maybe you've noticed in the last six months, it doesn't look that way. This is not like we're farming commercially to sell to Monsanto, we're trying to make the place look good. And we've hired a very local, organic guy who couldn't stay here.
Which I happen to, I actually.
Just trying to clean the place up, and we came to the city and said, hey, can you help? And now we're going to study this to the point where let's study it some more. And this is the classic government response, we'll study it so long that the fricking farming season's over and why deal with this?
Okay, so, you know, let me.
Came to you and said, could we get some help?
I know.
All right, so then it's commercial land, so in part of all the other stuff we had to do when we went to the Planning Commission, we said, hey, could we farm this on a temporary basis? At, at some point in the future, if you decide you don't want to do this, you can stop, or if we develop this into something else, we'll stop. But in the meantime, we, we'd like the temporary ability in this zone. Does it apply to anybody else? I guess they could come to you and ask the same thing.
Mr. Davidson, I'd like to tell you that I actually buy those vegetables, I'm a member of the Sustainable Agriculture, so I just, maybe I have a conflict of interest here participating in this because.
Thank you for bringing that up.
My vegetables may go up, okay, the price of my vegetables may go up, or actually, I should try to make them go down by having this agriculture.
We're trying to help.
Yes, so I do want the price of my vegetables to go down. But anyway, I, I was curious to know, okay, how this all got started and where, so it was only just a curiosity, and now I found out that my vegetables, okay, that I eat every Thursday are, are exactly the subject. Should I recuse myself?
I think you're safe on that, I think you have distance.
Anyway, so, thank you, sir. Going back to the rates, the agricultural water rates, I'd like to know who will qualify for these rates and will that be restricted, what, who qualifies for this, basically?
Well, not being somebody who set, who has the mechanisms to study this, as part of the study that Will Dan is working on, they would create standards that would say this class, because say you end up with a class that's the least expensive, you would probably see a lot of people saying they qualify for that rate. So the classes that are created would have some sort of criteria that says this is, this would qualify. And we may, might use the zoning, we might use the categories that are used for wastewater, because wastewater does have categories that we have to keep track of. There's a lot of different criteria, and that would be something that would come back to you. One thing I would like to comment on is Prop 218 was voted on by the people of the state of California. We can't just disregard Prop 218 for this purpose unless we can find a mechanism that's outside of the water and wastewater utilities that could provide for a solution. If we try to provide for that solution within the water utility, we're stuck with Prop 218. We can't go around Prop 218 for anything that deals with customer rates. So unfortunately, it, it's something we have to comply with.
Okay, so let me go back, Counsel Member Starbuck, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'd tell you, we've, we've been at this for a little bit, and it appears that nobody knows anything about water rates that we're trying to get at here. I see this as an opportunity, we've got seven acres out there, we have a well there, we can establish what I would consider a fair rate, as long as we're within the law on Prop 218 and all of our ordinances on utilities, we would be able to get an MOU with these people that are going to come out there, I understand they're an organic farming group or something that wants to do it. If we give them a fair rate, they win, the city wins with the cleanup of the entrance to town there. This happens with these people is, their hands are tied in the agricultural world here because they will be at the mercy of our utility department to determine when they can irrigate, because this is only going to happen when well 11's on. This is water that will never enter our system, so this is, I'm not going to say that it's excess water, but it's unaccounted-for water. So I, I think that this is the direction that I was looking at when we looked at this. We talked about sinking wells with the school, the school didn't want to go partners with us, we considered possibly the feasibility of doing this on some of our larger parks, we haven't moved on it, we're still flailing around with this rate structure thing, and I think that we ought to just. to just say, "This would be a fair price for us to charge. I think this would be a fair price for you to pay, as long as we're not violating Proposition 218." Then, we would at least have a baseline. We know who would win. Did the farmer get a better deal on water? Did the city lose money on this deal? Did we give away too much water? Are we overcharging? And I think that's really what we would want to do. And I mean, maybe before summer's over, we can.
Okay. So, here's kind of how we were going down the road until we, yeah, thanks, Brad. You can, you can sit down. When I asked the question before about water, we got onto Prop 218, and Brad went and did research, and it became very obvious that there were restrictions there. And then, I think all of us up here have the same problem from a moral standpoint of charging two different people a substantially different price for the same product. And so, then, the discussion went to, well, how do we get untreated water? Because the process of treating the water, depending on whose opinion you look at, is somewhere between 70 and 90 percent of the cost, and opinions vary widely. And so, then, we looked at the three alternatives I discussed, and at the end of the day, the water department's suggestion was that because we run well number 11 virtually all the time, and there is a three-inch plate on the manifold that could be taken off and a pipe could be put on, that we would be able to supply, if this council chose to do so, untreated water to the farmer in a three-inch pipe at 10 PSI, which he would then have to attach some booster device for to get it up to a water pressure he could use. And that would be a way of going down the road for this situation. But, because that's not part of our current rate structure, that requires this council to take an action. So, because this was coming up again, and you'll recall that a year and a half ago, a year-plus ago, I did a review of parks and schools and looked at, could we provide water to them and save some money? And then, we had a consultant's review, and the consultant's opinion was that we couldn't save money. So, I've been working on that in between and with both the school district and the well company and so on. So, I spent a bunch of time this weekend working up some numbers for that I'm gonna share with everybody. But first, addressing the study the consultant provided, I want to talk about some of the errors in the process that they followed. The method of water calculation used a chart for recycled water, treated effluent, not well water, and recycled water has more issues in cost. So, somehow, at the beginning, they got the idea that recycled water was the way they had to proceed, and that that recycled water, in fact, generated a $10,000 permit cost for any well at a school and a lesser cost for the city. Now, somehow, the whole idea got lost, because we weren't gonna drill the wells for the school. We were gonna drill the wells and sell the water to the school. I don't want somebody else with their straw in our aquifer. We want to be in control of that going out into the future. And I talked with Ron the other day, and he did a little background check. We, the city, don't pay a permit to drill a well. There's a form we have to file, but we don't have that cost from being due a well. And I talked with Tuan Yan from the school district, who, when he worked for the Santa Maria School District, drilled a well at Pioneer Valley High School, and they didn't pay a permit either. Then, there was the next question about whether or not untreated water could be used next to classrooms. And the school district, again, checked and found that, no, there was no restriction on using well water next to classrooms for irrigation. There may have been a restriction for using recycled water next to classrooms, and that may have been how that became confused. And then, there was the question of the per-foot cost of putting in various piping. In the consultant's report, that was estimated at $60 a foot for all of their calculations. I spoke to two local contractors, RL Johnson Construction, who does under sidewalk and street boring, and their rate for a two-inch pipe was $25 a foot, and for a three-inch pipe was $30 a foot. It's likely that most of this pipe will be three-inch. And then, I chatted with both Miller Landscape and RL Johnson with regard to burying pipe in turf, and that looks like it might be about $5.50 a foot, which is a long way from 60 bucks a foot. And then, I talked to Yenez Electric. Matter of fact, when Councilmember Lingle and I were driving down the road one day, and the consultant estimated the undergrounding of electrical to the wells at $25 a foot, and they quoted us $15 a foot. And, let's see. On the reverse side, when the consultant asked A&amp;A Well Drilling here in Lumpoke to spec a well, they specked a six-inch well pipe, and in conversations over the last couple of days with A&amp;A over this, they said, "No, that the outer bore that was specked at 12 inches is correct, but the inner bore at 6 inches is inadequate, because these systems need to deliver, according to the school district, about 225 gallons a minute, and to do that, it needs to be an 8-inch pipe." So, that's a little more money. The other thing that was really strange was the consultant specked in their report three different pumps in ranges from 5 to 20 horsepower. And talking to A&amp;A well, they said, "No, you're gonna have to have a 20-horsepower pump." And the consultant specked a 460-volt pump. Unfortunately, out of all the parks and school sites, there are only two that would have 460 volts. All the rest of the locations have 208 voltage, and a 208-voltage pump is more expensive and uses a different control structure. But that's a good thing, because a 208 pump has, is a variable-speed pump, and they're used on a lot of golf courses and green areas, because as different circuits in the sprinkler system come on, they take a different load, so it'll slow the pump down or speed the pump up, and it prolongs pump life and reduces electricity. But instead of being a $6,000 pump, it's a $18,000 pump with the appropriate fixtures. Then, there's a question of well locations. We received pictures in our staff report of the well locations, and staff was able to provide me back then with a list with a color picture of it, which I then forwarded to the school district, and they looked at all the sites and actually said, "No, those well sites that were selected aren't where we want them." And I went around all the schools with Mr. Tuan yesterday, and we selected sites that were in the proximity of the water manifold and the electricity, because obviously, running more pipe is more cost. And then, the last thing that struck me as odd was that the consultant amortized this system over 10 years, and as an example, well number 11 is amortized over 30 years. And in talking to some friends of mine in the pump and well business, and also AA Pump and Well, the average life of a well like this with annual maintenance is about 50 years. So, erring on the side of caution, I picked 20 years, even though 30 would seem to be the standard. It's gonna be another couple minutes. Don't go away, guys. I'll get there. So, the next step was a little trip around town to all the various locations. And just so that everybody sees that there's plenty of facts to go with it, there's a site report for each site. And so, here's the one for Ryan Park, and I'll spend a little time on this one, and then the rest of them I'll just kind of pass down, and the important numbers are down on the bottom. But this one talks about Ryan Park and LVMS and the Civic Theater. So, one well would accommodate all three of these locations. And so, the first question was, "What's the well cost?" Well, the well cost is the same on every site, because AA said, "That's the well you need to drill." And the next one is the control cost, which includes the pump, the well, the controls, the meter main and all that, and every one that says 208 volts on it will be the same. And then, the next one down talks about the number of feet of pipe that has to be run to each and everything, and I'm here to tell you, I took a wheel and wheeled them all off. So, plus or minus 20 feet, there it is. And then, so that gives a total construction cost for this particular well of $79,140. And if you amortize that over 20 years at 5 percent interest, that's $6,200 a year. I took the consultant's number for electricity. I believe it to be high, but I didn't have time to work backwards on all those. And then, so the annual cost is $19,352. Currently, those two facilities spend $53,000 on irrigation water, and the irrigation water was determined on the attached sheets by taking the low month, multiplying it by 12, and subtracting it from the annual use. And that may still even be a little high, because a sprinkler may have been on in that month. But this is the most accurate way, and this is the way we use to calculate sewer rates, although we use a three-month average. So, what that all boils down to is, at the end of the day, this well would save us, between the schools and the city, $33,000 bucks a year, almost 33 and a half. And there's one for Hapgood School in Beatty Park. The reason the well is in Hapgood School is because there's no water up at Beatty Park, and the well guy said, "If you drill up there, you won't get anything but dust." And so, that well is out on the far end of Hapgood School, and he didn't indicate there was any head pressure issue with the pump pumping it up that hill. And that was a $27,000 savings per year for that set of locations. The next one is Lumpoke High School. Lumpoke High School has a $35,000 savings per year compared to using city water. The next one is Laconyada School, and that one has a lot of grass, so that's a $19,000, almost $20,000 a year savings. And again, there's probably some additional savings with regard to the electricity. The next one's kind of the poster child for being next to each other, which is Fillmore School and Pioneer Park. They are literally across the street from each other, and that one has a $15,000 a year savings. And the next one is Laconyada School and the school district office, and that has a $12,000 per year savings. And the next one is Clarence Ruth School over on the far side of town. The savings on this one is a little bit smaller, because the pump location had to be further away from where it was most convenient, and that had a $4,000 savings. And the next one is Thompson Park, and I didn't get the water spreadsheet to go with this. Somehow, the computer program ate it, but these are the numbers, and it had about a $6,000 a year savings. And the next one is Megalito School, kind of like Beatty Park. Talking to the well guy, it had issues. The closest place you could drill for water was about halfway between Olive and Ocean, right across the street from an existing well. So, its savings is smaller, only about $3,600 a year. The one that was kind of surprising was Briar Creek Park. In my original study, it didn't really look like it was gonna do very well, but with some revised numbers from this study, ended up being almost $5,000 a year in savings. And the same thing with JM Park. It actually got a little better off in the study with, just short of $5,000 a year. And then, the last one, sorry about this one, but it's El Camino School, and this one is what I would call a guesstimate, because I didn't get the right information from the school district. I just extrapolated this, and it was at the end of the list anyway. It only had about a $4,000 savings. Mr. Mayor, did you spend Mother's Day at least with your wife? I spent Mother's Day morning with my wife, and I spent Mother's Day day with my wheel and wheeled all over town. And here's a summation of all of those.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry.
Hang on. I'm gonna get to the end of it in a second, and then I'll get back to you. So, if you put all of them together, based on the numbers that I have here, which I believe to be reasonably correct, and if anything, the savings will be better, it's about $172,000 a year in savings for the schools and the parks. And that's why I'm kind of excited about having an agricultural water rate. Councilmember Costa.
Mayor, although I appreciate your due diligence and hard work in this topic, I, until your last statement, was a little confused as to why we are going over this smack dab in the middle of this agenda item, as opposed to requesting it as a separate agenda item. So, what you were speaking of throughout your discussion was about untreated water.
Correct.
This agenda item is about a rate study to include the evaluation of an agricultural water rate. I see those as two different and distinct issues.
Okay. The idea here was that this agricultural water rate would be for untreated water, because with the way the proposition is written, we probably don't have the ability to offer a substantially different rate for agricultural water that's treated. It's really would be a great waste of time. On the other hand, we have a great opportunity to, in the course of this study, determine what a fair rate and way to return for agricultural water would be for these various locations, and there's probably room to expand them at some point to other large parcels where there's a lot of green belt, for instance. And I'm not looking to do that. I'm just saying that's a future possibility. But within this rate study, we need to address untreated water, and what the cost of that water is, and what the methodology for charging for that water is. So, for instance, when I did this, there's no city overhead structure built into this, because I wouldn't have any idea how to calculate that. I got another handout back here that talks about what the overhead is, but I wouldn't know how to incorporate that, so I view this rate structure, rate study as the time to determine what an agricultural well water rate would be, untreated water rate, let's say it that way, an untreated water rate.
So, right. So, then, my concern would be, that still wouldn't be, I hate to go back and study this more, but that topic is completely separate from the topic that was brought forth in the council agenda item. So, therein lies my concern. There was clearly a miscommunication between council and staff, or the applicant of the letter and staff and council in regards to what we were requesting, and we didn't get the information. So, it's very difficult for me to make a decision based on information that I do not have. So, I hate to go back and study it more, but I would also hate to make a decision without the appropriate information. Thank you.
Actually, what I'm passing out tonight is more of a starting point for the discussion rather than an ending point, because I'm not satisfied that all the answers that are in there are fully fleshed out. It's more of a starting point. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm very confused. First of all, is, you know, we paid a consultant for this, and we're getting this, which I'm sure is very valuable, and I don't know why there's such a discrepancy between the consultant results and the mayor's results, and I think that needs to be worked out, okay? There is no question that we can just leave it there, hanging in the air, and say, "Well, the mayor has these numbers," but the consultant that was paid by the city with tax monies is giving a different answer. So, to me, that's an agenda item in of itself that needs to be worked out, and is separate for the prob, and in a way, amazingly enough, is separate because it's a procedural issue. Why is this city spending money that way? And here, we have somebody else do an independent study and comes out with very different results, okay? Be the mayor or not be the mayor, it doesn't matter, right? So, that, I would like to really discuss it as an agenda item. Now, let's deal with the problem ahead, which we have a request here on our table about a very specific thing going on with these vegetables growing in the entrance of town, and they're asking for a rate. We have a couple of things on the table. One of them, what Councilmember Starbuck suggested, is, "Let's talk about a fair rate specifically for this case here." You know, so we have all of this stuff going on here on the table, but I think the agenda item needs to answer to what the request from this property owner was at this point in time. I really feel that we owe an answer to that, since it was brought up as an agenda item. What the mayor just brought up in here, I think it deserves a whole new agenda item that has to do specifically with the process and the inconsistencies with a contract, a city contract, and an independent study. I mean, I think that needs to be discussed before we can talk about the validity of any of these numbers. So, I would So I would say, can we focus in trying to figure out what to do with this property owner's request tonight, here in the next fifteen minutes? And then perhaps the mayor might want to agendize this?
I think, let me just ask the question of Brad. Brad, given our current, given the proposition, is, my understanding is that there's not any way we can give this individual a substantially different rate for agricultural water than we give everyone else. Is that a fairly correct statement?
Without going through the process, correct.
Okay. And my, at the end of the day, having taken a read through the proposition, I think it's very unlikely that we're going to end up giving them, that there's going to be much come out of that process. I think we need to go instead, as you suggest, down the road of agendizing this discussion because what I'm passing out tonight is just preliminary in nature. And what I actually would feel a lot more comfortable about would be to spend some time with Public Works, who's very versed in these things, and let them put their math to work on it. You know, I can, I'll share with them what I've done, but I think they're the ones that could bring forward better information to us. So I agree with you. And I would be happy to make a motion.
Mary Lynn, the outstanding issue still stands in regards to, are we going to be requesting that the study includes something beyond what it's going to include at the time, at this time? So are we requesting that staff look into the untreated water potentially as it's a separate rate, or are we asking to have that included in the rate study?
I think it actually needs to be included in the rate study because if, let's assume for a moment that half of the ones on that list that are big numbers prove to be economically viable, and we converted those group of properties from treated water to well water, and all of them together, according to consultant's report, account for about four and a half percent of the water the city distributes, that's going to have an impact on the rate study. Because there's going to be some savings, but there's going to be some costs, too.
And Mr. Wilkie, do you see a manner in which the folks doing the rate study would include this discussion?
I've already talked to them about including an agricultural rate. I have not talked to them about including a untreated water structure along with the existing structure. So I'd have to find out from them if that's something they can incorporate into their
Okay. So let me try to make a motion, see if it'll all work out for everybody. I move that the city staff be instructed to work with our consultant to incorporate a non-treated water rate on a discussion basis, and that the public, I asked him to make a motion, we'll do that, the public works department review the information and bring a presentation back to council. How about a second? And then we'll go to public comment. Bring, you know, I'll give them my information, and they'll look through it and come back to council. Because I need to independently confirm what I did. I gave you some information, I feel pretty good about it, but it would be really good to have Public Works look at it because I believe they would bring professionalism to it, and they're experienced in these kinds of projects, and there may be things I've overlooked either positively or negatively.
Mary Lynn, although I agree that staff would have the knowledge to do that, I think the issue was, we, Ms. Barcelona, can you please discuss why we went with a consultant in the first place for this topic?
Councilmember Costa, we went out with a consultant because we felt that we didn't have the expertise in-house.
I think that was the utility department, and I, the thing that got me going on this was I noticed, looking at Well 11's report, that the public works department actually handled that project, and I think they're more acquainted with construction projects than perhaps a utility department that's concerned with delivering services. I mean, I'm more than happy to go on my own little way and keep working on this and work up the numbers better. I know what the next steps are.
I would, I would-
It would be nice to have a little professional help.
I would be more comfortable with a staff report coming back, and then pending the staff report, we can review an agenda item. But I think because we've discussed this, and there's so many other priorities on the table right now, I would prefer that you work with staff through a staff report that way, and then bring it back to council pending what the result from staff is.
Okay, I'm good with that. You can make that a motion.
Included in the motion would be to have staff return to the folks doing the rate study and attempt to include the evaluation of an untreated water rate, if that's part of their scope even at all.
Okay, I'm good with that. So I second your motion. Now for public comment. Come on down. Don't be bashful. Remember, government moves in slow and mysterious ways.
Hi, I'm Tom Davidson. Would it be possible to have a temporary rate of untreated water that would allow us for some period of time that you decide, and you can turn it off when you decide, so we can help the sky out? When we, when we look at the development of the entire property, I mean, if we knew today what we were going to do with it all, we'd come in with a plan, and we'd do it all, and we wouldn't even be farming. But in the meantime, I mean, all we're trying to do is help clean up the site and help the community and so forth. So maybe a solution would be, is there some way to do this on a temporary basis where, rather than-
I'll second that.
If we got to establish utility rates for the entire city, it's going to take a while for you guys to sort all that out. I don't know, I'm just asking.
I don't know the answer to that, but my intention is to come back in two weeks with this revised information, and in two weeks, I'll have that revised information for you , too. Yes. Well, but I'll find out if maybe we can do something on interim basis for untreated water, because in their case, the well is sitting there and it's running and so on. So we'll find out. The answer is, we'll see. But we're getting closer, all right? Anyone else? All right, coming back. Any further discussion before we vote on Councilmember Costa's motion? Okay, seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes five-zero. Okay, good things. Item number eleven is continued, and now we have written communications. Do we have any written communications?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, who gave the second on that motion? Okay.
Yeah, she wanted to know who seconded, I said I did. Yeah. Okay, what do we have left? We have reports, that's yours. I stole it again. Who, have any written communications? Nope, okay. Do we have oral communications? Your last two minutes to come and say something. No. Okay. And seeing no one rise, we'll close our communications, come back to the council for discussion and reports. From the left, Councilmember Martner.
Don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just had a few quick things. I did want to mention that I attended the bike rodeo put on by the Healthy Lompoke Coalition in the YMCA parking lot, and that was very successful. I think they gave out about three hundred helmets to young folks and also some bike locks, and Lompoke PD was there to get the bikes registered, and there was also a bike auction. So it was a really great event for the community, which was really exciting for the Health of Lompoke Coalition, which I am a member of. Also, I went to the Heroes for Justice Award, put on by the Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County. The reason I went was as a board member of the Community Action Commission, we were being honored as a hero for justice, so that was very exciting. Some of our programs do work for justice and, you know, a lot of these social welfare things, so that was great. Also, I do want to give a shout out to a great local business, CrossFit Ohana, had their grand opening. It's a new CrossFit gym in our community, and if you haven't checked it out, definitely check it out, it's worthwhile. It is, the address, I don't know specifically, it's in the complex with the, with Clopepe and Flying Goat, right there on, off of Laurel near V. It's a new, new building development there. And so they're doing a really great job. They did get, I think, a conditional use permit to use that facility, and I definitely think you should check it out because I am enjoying it.
And they're very nice people, too. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, let's see, it was Tuesday, the eighth, I went and previewed the upcoming mural in a day, the artist concept that we'll be doing for the nonprofits, service groups in the community. On Thursday, the tenth, I presented, I helped present scholarships at Lompoke High School. I was representing the Santa Barbara Foundation and the Rotary Clubs. On the eleventh, I was a waiter with the mayor and Councilmember Costa-
Yes, yes.
-for a Boys and Girls Club auction dinner. We were waiting for it.
We were raffled.
On the twelfth, Saturday, the twelfth, I participated in Relay for Life, and my wife and I walked from 2:00 AM to 3:00 AM. Wonderful, wonderful time. And that was it.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, since we're starting from the opposite left now, I'd just like to say, I did attend the dedication to the Vandenberg Air Force Base Child Development Center, and what a lucky group of parents out there on Vandenberg Air Force Base, because it's a very top-of-the-line facility they received. Something that I think is kind of unique and very important is Kids' Day in the Park by the North County Rape and Child Protective Services, for the last twenty-seven years, has been held at Waller Park in Santa Maria. Due to cost and whatever else and influence that Lompoke has had, this is the first time in twenty-seven years that this event's going to be here in Lompoke, and it will be this Sunday. So I mean, take advantage of it, it's the first time, no participation, no come back to Lompoke probably, so I mean, get out and do it. Also, this Sunday, I'd like to give a little shout out to the drag strip guys, they're doing a little fundraiser at Beatty Ford Rod Show, probably have some food to buy, so show up there. One of the accounts requests, and I might have missed it, or I'd just like maybe you to address it at the next meeting, City Administrator, is we had a pretty good conversation about CDBG Capital Projects, and we discussed the library roof, and I just got lost in what we were doing with the library, so thank you.
To add to Councilmember Starbuck, that event, the Kids' Day in the Park, starts at 10:00 AM, it goes until 3:00 PM, and that's at El Camino School on the twentieth.
And to add to everybody, be there or be square, because it's going to be a lot of fun. For kids of all ages, because if you watch The Young Kids, that's just as good. Okay, on the fourth, I attended the Northern Santa Barbara County Economic Forecast. The city paid my ticket for that one because it was kind of a last-minute thing. And I want to summarize just a little bit for the council, and I'm happy to talk to each of you about what was there because it doesn't affect us and it won't be a Brown Act problem. There was a discussion first from the gentleman from the petroleum, American Petroleum Institute, and obviously, he's an advocate for petroleum, but I think the two takeaways I got from that were the confirmation of the discussion that Bob and I had after the NCPA meeting, that there is now between two and, two and three hundred years of natural gas available in the United States, and that that'll have a profound impact on our industry and on our lives. And they are still drilling holes, and they think there's probably a lot more because of the new drilling techniques. And also, again, because of the new drilling techniques, there's the ability within the United States to generate enough liquid petroleum to make us energy independent within twelve years if everybody was turned loose, and it would generate another million and a half jobs and generate about eight hundred billion dollars for the federal government, not to mention local governments, well, not us, county governments and state governments. The next one was a presentation from the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta's chief economist, and it was a little different from the one last year, so let me just summarize thirty minutes for you. It's definitely getting a little better, it's not going to get any worse. There's foreclosures out to about 2014, but they're being sold off at a much more rapid rate, and we don't see that as a future problem. And somewhere in 2013 or 2014, housing construction should start reviving as demand comes back, and the Arabs don't seem to want the price of fuel to go up, so that shouldn't be an impact. So overall, I would say the result was cautiously guarded. The next discussion was from the chairman of the Santa Barbara, the UCSB Economic Forecast, and I think he basically said the same things, except he was predicting that growth within the county would be within the oil and agri, I'm sorry, the wine and agriculture industries primarily, and he didn't see much growth in other industries, other than wine, agriculture, and tourism. And the numbers for the North County looked better than the numbers for the South County. I went to other, twenty-one other meetings and events, and came away with a week of seeing an awful lot of happy people, particularly impressed by the group out at the cancer run. And I shared with them Chief Dabney's story, but he left. When he was at, down at the Christmas parade last year, one of the officers from Santa Maria said, hey, you know, you guys raised so much money, can you introduce me to that billionaire in Lompoke that donates all the money? And so what I said to the audience there was, and here's all the billionaires from Lompoke. And we did what we always do, we had a good time and raised a lot of money. I do have a request from the Taxpayers Association to make a presentation to us with regard to, I guess, economic growth and also the Chumash Camp 14 property, so I will be scheduling that for a future council meeting. And then Councilmember Starbuck and I have something to share. Fireworks.
Go ahead.
Okay. He's the one that got me going on it. As you all know, we don't allow fireworks in Lompoke, and what got me thinking about it the other day is I got another and another letter from someone out there that said, well, why don't we? So the mayor pro tem happened to be sitting there, and I said, hey, Dirk, you've lived here a long time, why don't we? And he said, I don't know, we never have. And so I called the fire chief and said, hey, why don't we? And actually, I talked to the boss first, and she said, call the fire chief. And so he went back and did a little looking, and it's just always been that way, and it was kind of that way back when because there were a lot of issues with fireworks. And then I said, okay, well, you know, do we still have those issues? And he said, well, in the time I've been on the fire department, I recall one wood fence being caught fire because the fireworks caught the weeds on fire, and the weeds caught the fence on fire. And so it's probably a little late for this year unless the city attorney can do some voodoo for us. But I would surely love to have our folks be able to have the safe and sane fireworks. I have very fond memories of doing that when I lived in another city, and no fond memories of doing it anywhere here except the parking lot in Santa Maria, which didn't seem to be near as much fun. So I'd like to have that for an agenda item, and I'd be looking for a second and a third. Well, I know I got the second. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'll be the third, understanding that this, for me, is very low priority. We still haven't even heard the chicken ordinance come back yet, so there's much more pressing things for us to consider at this time. Understanding that, I'll be the third.
Well, I think, I think what we're doing is we're starting to work our way down the path for, for a year from the Fourth of July, unless, you know, the city attorney has magic. We never know about him, he might have magic. Okay, is there anything else? So therefore, we are adjourned to a regular meeting at, no. We are adjourned to an irregular meeting on May 29th. Yes?
I thought we had something the 22nd.
No, we don't have a 22nd. We have a 29th, right? Yes, okay. So we are adjourned, adjourned to an irregular meeting on the June, on- So we are adjourned to an irregular meeting on the, on May 29th.